Water management, private pumping.
There you go.
He's right here. He's gonna take the stand.
All right.
All set.
All right. Well, Jim kind of took a much bigger, more scientific view of what I'm really going to get into. So I'm glad I'm kind of coming after him to kind of give you guys a really good understanding of what I'm kind of not getting into and what homeowners are dealing with when we have these big rain events. All right. So just kind of real quick, I'm talking about flood zones. I'm gonna give you a couple of quick definitions, kind of a one on one of floods. So if you're in a flood zone, it means that when we've run our our state hydrology models and wave models and all those things, it's found that there is going to be a chance for some flooding on your property. Base flood elevation is the elevation above sea level. They have determined that there is a 1% chance every year floodwaters are going to reach this height. A lot of times you'll see AE nine. What that means is every year that there's a chance that flood levels will reach nine feet above sea level. That doesn't mean it's nine feet above ground. You look at what grade is, a lot of times, some of these lower lining areas, it's like five. So you're looking at four feet of floodwaters that they're predicting could happen during one of these storms. So that's what your base flood elevation is. Freeboard is something that the village has elected to to add to our flood dance prevention ordinance. It's voluntary and it's kind of a safety factor. We can put one foot of freeboard. So that means that you get your base flood elevation plus that one foot of freeboard, you get your regulatory flood protection elevation. So once again, going to the AE nine, that means that anything 10 feet above sea level and below has to be flood resistant construction, flood vents, treated wood, no insulation, no sheet rock, those kinds of things. So those are kind of the things that, that when people are building your houses, that I'm making sure are elevated correctly. The architects are planning and, and putting the things in place so that they're elevated to meet that, to mitigate damages during these flooding events. When, that kind of gets into what I'm talking, when performing the work, there's technical bulletins that FEMA puts out that says, what is flood resistant materials? So like I said, you'll get into some of the hardy board, treated lumber. Closed cell foam insulation is okay. So those are the kinds of things that we're going to allow below, below that regulatory flood height. This is kind of a a look at the different types of houses. Obviously, we're mainly over here where your pier foundations are and you may have some, some like your garages and storage. Best, this is kind of not really the way things done because the lowest floor, top of floor level that they're showing there, you can technically build it that way, but it's highly expensive and it's not best construction practices. So usually what you'll see is the house is elevated a little bit higher. So then at least generally your floor system is going to be basically at that, that elevation where we want everything to be above freeboard. Technically, you can build it like that, but you don't see it like that.
Yeah, just a quick question. So the AR, so the review board with the association, they're, one of their criteria is two foot above flood.
That's the maximum they would let you do.
You're right. I'm sorry.
Personally, as floodplain administrator, I wish there wasn't a maximum. I understand why they do that. They, they, they're looking at how does it look? They don't want it looking laggy and these kinds of things. But to me, it's best practice to get it as high as you can while not exceeding that 35 foot maximum building.
If we are changing this diagram, you're looking at instead of freeboard to the lowest floor, we're actually, aren't we looking at freeboard to the bottom of the framing?
Even there is a layer on that. Yeah, I don't know how to work it. I don't want to mess something up.
You know, so if, if.
So what this is showing is this is the, I guess, the freeboard. This is base flood elevation.
Right.
But typically, if, right, what you're saying is we're going to be more like here.
Yeah.
Is simply what we're getting.
Right.
The, the thing we do run into and we've been dealing with is most of the houses now have a drop force system, which means that your joints and things are on hangers or they're, they're dropped down, which is lowering your force system. They're also not quite as deep, which means that your, your HVAC system, your ductwork isn't able to run through your floor system anymore. So they're having to hang it down below. Well, that's putting in a freeboard, which you really can't do. I, I found some FEMA technical bulletins that they were allowed to hardpipe it and then closed cell spray foam it so that floodwaters can't get into your ductwork. You can do it. FEMA doesn't like it. I fought them a couple of years on it and I've told the, the contractors going forward that I'm not going to fight that fight anymore. But they're going to figure it out to get that ductwork out of the flood zone, including the freeboard. So that, that is, that dotted line, it's kind of showing, that's what you can do. But like I said, that's, that's not best practice. That's not really what we're seeing out in this field. That dotted line would be like Peter saying, right below. I only really showed AE flood zones. So that's where you're getting floodwaters that rise vertically. I don't think there's currently any B-zone houses on the island anymore. Prior to 2018, there was some, a new map that came out in 2018 took all those out. So probably this is what we're dealing with. These zones where you expect a wave action, four foot waves coming through, a lot more destructive, a lot more restrictive on how you you build and protect the structure. So what are the main causes of flooding of Ballhead? It's what Jim really went into. It, it's been heavy rain events that have brought the groundwater up. It hasn't been a lot of overwash, storm surge, those kinds of things. We've been lucky in that way. Storm surge is obviously a lot more destructive. We're going to lose our dunes future. It's going to be a lot longer to recover from something like that. Kind of what Jim talked about, our soil has a great circulation rate. It can handle a lot of rain. It just can't handle 30 inches, 20, 20 inches in a short period of time. So as that groundwater pushes up, then we get, we get that pounding effect coming up. That's getting into our, our pumps and how we respond to that, that groundwater coming up. We, we turn those two big pumps on when Cam allows us and it moves all that, that groundwater off island so that we can get that down as quick as possible. So what does that mean? What to expect during a significant rainfall event if you're a homeowner? If your property is located in a FEMA designated floodplain, which a lot of the homes here are, if the answer is yes, there's a chance every year that floodwaters are going to reach the height shown for your, for your house. I hate the hundred year storm designation that they give to it because everybody says, well, it's only going to happen once every hundred years. That's not what it means. Means there's a 1% chance every year. If you're in a 500 year floodplain, it means there's 1% chance. So it's not once every hundred years. It's once every year it could happen. If the elevation of your lot is basically below seven foot sea level, which is kind of what Jim went into, you can expect pounding. If you're in the lower lining areas, it's going to be kind of heightened and it's going to last for longer. Helpful resource to protect your personal property during flooding is to find the regulatory flood height for your property. Find it in your garage. Put a line mentally noted. Anything below that, don't put it there if you don't want to get wet. At your significant flooding events, owners often ask, what can I do? Can I have flooded on my property during future events? Can I build a burn? And install a private pump? Both, both instances generally the answer is no. Two reasons. One, it's not going to be very effective, kind of some things that Jim talked to you about. It's going to rise vertically whether you got a burn or whether you're pumping. And two, it's, it's not really allowing the natural flow of water. Ballhead Island's been built with the thought that we stay as close to nature as we can. We don't want to alter these flood sites or the floodwaters and where they're going. We don't have ditches that move everything to retention areas. We don't clear cut, grade. So we don't want to change how we're affecting our neighbors. Doing a burn, doing pumping, obviously could, could do some of those things. So generally the answer is no. In the past, we've tried to work with folks, but as we get more developed, it gets more and more difficult. And we probably want to look at really no private pumping. It's just creating more problems and more issues than it's really solving. That's really what I've got.
I have a question about private pumping. In, in PTC eight, some of the neighbors around me pumped from one area of their property to another area of their own property. So it was, they better sort it that way. Would that be permissible?
Like I said, we've looked at this on a case by case basis and we have approved it in the past. Like I said, if there's a low lying area where you can show us, it's not going to, going to affect your neighbors. If it's why we have the CAMA thing going, we allow some people to actually pump over the dune somewhere to the village, up to the beach. Pushing things to, to lagoons, but like I said, that's really a council decision. Right now it's left up to me to kind of make that decision and determine if it's safe for, for a private owner to, to do something where it's not going to affect other folks.
I will say it's a policy that is very hardly important. Who can, who can, and if they can, open it to somebody else's property and damage something, determine why. Truly charged damage problem. So it's extremely difficult, the case by case situation.
And if we had a, kind of have a blanket, no private pumping, then folks kind of know not to do it as opposed to, right now they're kind of doing it and then asking for permission later. Just cause problems.
So, so is the, is the problem only homes that have homeowners who have chosen to build finished square footage below freeboard?
No. I mean, folks have flooding in their garages. They want to just get access to their house. The standing water, they're still going to create mold and issues. It's really, I don't, to my knowledge, there's not a lot of finished areas that are flooding.
Good.
There's, there's a couple of pet of loss houses that we have a list of. They're generally over homes. But generally it's, it's still just the nuisance flood. I can't get access to my house. It's just the standing water, the smell, the mosquitoes, those kinds of things. And I do have a, a example of an elevation certificate that I can kind of walk through. So if you, if you have one of these or there's, you know, a pretty good chance that I have one in my office, if you wanted to find your kind of regulatory flood area, I can kind of show you what you want to look for on that, or I'd be glad to meet with people and, and just kind of see if I can help them figure out where that would be. But this is what we get when you get a new home constructed. If you've got an older home, we may have one. If it's prior to 2004, I can't make any promises for what was done before me, but I've, I've done a pretty good job of, of keeping a, a pretty good account of them. Your, your flood insurance carrier may also have a copy. But this is what you'll get. This is just kind of your basic general building information. Building diagram six is where you're getting basically all pilings with a garage below or storage area below. It gives you your square footage of enclosures. And then it will show you that you've got the appropriate amount of flood openings to account for that. You have to have one square inch of, of flood openings for every square foot of enclosure you have. Let's scroll down a little bit. I highlighted here, that shows what your flood zone is. This one is an AE nine. So that's where you're going to find what your, your FEMA height is. And then once you add your freeboard, you're going to be at 10, 10 feet above sea level. That's an extra. So this is where you get all your good, good information. So top of bottom floor, since this has an enclosure, that means your garage slab or storage area is basically five feet above sea level. So top of next floor, that's your finished floor of your first floor living space, 14 and a half. So that's the difference in that height. Bottom of lowest horizontal structural member, that's the bottom of your girders at 12.
So right here, so this is a good example. So right here, it's AE nine.
Three feet above that.
So, yeah, but your garage, that's kind of fun.
Yeah.
Just flat out.
Yeah. So, so here for the bottom of your floor system, you're three feet above your, your base flood elevation, so you're two feet above the, the freeboard in this instance.
And you said that's the max by the ARC that much.
Correct. It also gives you the lowest elevation of machinery or electrical equipment because obviously we don't want things like HVAC condensers, electrical panels, receptacles in your garage. All those things are shown here and that they're elevated high enough. This is the important thing. If you're trying to find out kind of where you're at, your lowest adjacent grace, you can kind of look at where the low spot around your house is, that four and a half feet. So if you wanted to find where 10 feet is, measure six and a half feet up from that low spot, that'll kind of tell you where you're at and where you can expect your, your kind of flood levels to reach. So that's kind of the important information you can get from your elevation certificate.
So from the council point of view, you know, you have, right now, you're the you're the final answer. You know, and somebody has a question about pumping or not pumping, they're going to you, which I think makes all the sense in the world. I don't think somebody's pumping their house. They don't want to wait for the next council meeting.
And generally I'm, I'm going out there and I'm, I'm saying, okay, where do you want to pump? And sometimes it's okay. And sometimes I, I just say, I'm sorry, you know, that's.
So I guess my, I, the follow up, the real question is, do you want that? Is it to our advantage as a village to just take that away? It's like, the answer is no.
Yeah, I, I think it is just because it, I feel like it puts me in a situation where it can be perceived as I'm, I've got a favorite that I'm okay with or I'm not okay with. It's difficult to go out there when everything's flooding. Is that going to cause a problem? Not a, I'm not Jim Corrigan. I don't understand the hydrology like he does. Is it, is it okay to dump it here? Seems okay to me, but.
Right. I kind of.
It kind of puts me in an awkward spot. And as we get more and more developed, the, the places where you can put it or get fewer and fewer, where it's not going to cause a problem. And to Jim's point, it makes them feel good. But it's really not a problem. It's recycling the water.
Right. Now, how, how old is this elevation certificate?
That one is, I want to say fairly new, 225 West Ballhead. So yeah, that was actually real, real hard.
Okay. So this is, you know, obviously it's a behavior. I mean, this person will want to pump the very next time it floods because their, all their golf carts are ruined. And so, you know, I, I think having a policy that's uniform everywhere. So decisions like this are made.
Right. And, and I've kind of floated the idea internally of with new construction, having in the garage, having that freeboard line in the garage. So it'd be a visual effect. Then probably would ask their builder, hey, why is there a line here on my garage? I didn't ask. Oh, that's where you can possibly have floodwaters every year.
Yeah.
So everything below that can possibly get wet every year. So that there is an, it's an education because I mean, unfortunately, some people buy a house and it, it'll be dry for four years. And then, you know, Florence or tropical depression, cyclone, whatever it was, comes along and now they've got three feet in their garage that they weren't expecting, even though they bought a floodplain and they understand they bought a floodplain. But so it actually happens and you see it and it's there for three weeks.
Well, I think some of the assumption is I'm on an island and buying in a floodplain, but not.
Floodplain.
But, but, but I mean, you know, we're all on a mostly floodplain.
Right.
So I think I know the answer to this is so this calculation and puts you in a floodplain has nothing to do with the ability to run off in your area. It's just, it's just a pipe measure.
Right. Well, it's, it's still based on the hydrology of the island. North Carolina, at least until about 10 years ago, and I think we still are, we're the only state that hires its own engineers to do the wave model. So they do a bunch of LiDAR data to get elevations. They kind of know how the island, how high it is. And they run a whole bunch of model and it sits out basically a flood.
When did they do that last?
The last one was 2018. The model was done prior to that. That's when it was 2018.
Okay.
It's supposed to be every five years.
Okay.
Obviously we're getting closer to 10 years and we haven't updated it.
Right.
Just because federal government tends to be slow and not be better.
Because I think there were some questions about, some people had some questions about some of that at one point.
Right. But it, but the fact that we have our own engineers that do it and FEMA certifies it means that we are getting our significantly more accurately and more time.
Okay.
It's, it's really been, been nice that, that we can do that. I would expect that they're, they should be working on updating the flood maps. They, because it does take into account development and things that, that would increase some of those numbers. So when we'll get it, I don't know. I haven't heard anything.
Okay. Stephen, a, a policy like that will, is that something you would want to send ordinance?
So both Charles and I have read a memo from one of our great associates on this and the, the distillation of what I read was that we might be limited in full, fully prohibiting any pumping, but that there are other municipalities that do prohibit pumping into places that are not control of stormwater systems that we don't have. Or areas that are designated as, you know, outflowed by a DQ. And so there, there will be possibly some because some people might be in areas where that would be okay. So to answer the question, I think it would be an ordinance or change to our ordinance, which allows for. It doesn't say anything about it all right now.
It mentions, it mentions that you have to get basically permission.
Permission, yeah. It's a permissive structure, but without a lot of, a lot of guardrails and what even that mean. I think it would be an ordinance change for sure, Eric.
That wasn't clear to me.
It would be an ordinance change. It would require an ordinance, yes.
Just says no.
Right.
Yeah, we, we would, we would probably have an ordinance that says you can pump it into and whether we, certain places, but we may not have any of those places here. Or certain homeowners may not have access to those places.
At least that would give it.
But that would give you more.
Pretty clear, black and white.
And you would know where those places are and therefore public safety would know.
I'm trying to, I'm struggling with how that would be implemented. I'm thinking of, of this one, there were there were pipes going all the way down Muscatine out to the beach. Everybody with deep enough pockets or enough resolve could get a pipe to the beach. How would we?
It's, it's a good, it's a good question from a safety. I mean, I would think that.
The last one that you referred to created a safety issue, which we had to go out and address because there was a
The speed bump?
Yeah, cross, you want to call it, on South Old Airway by Muscatine.
We threw a bunch of mulch on it, but it kept on going. I mean, kept on going, right? And again, I, all right. So if somebody was kind enough to put one of those temporary bumps on it. I mean, I think the village did that on some of them too. We put a temporary bump on Federal Road, right? Over one of our pipes because.
We have structures that actually are built for that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I mean, so it's, it's available, right? I mean, so if somebody said, yeah, I want to do that. I mean, I.
So the difference in that was, would be ours is not private pumping.
I realize that. I, I think, set aside that piece. I, I, I think we're, we're, we're inviting a, a really contentious thing, right? Because we're sitting here saying pumping doesn't help, but only we're allowed to pump, only we, the government entities are allowed to pump. And that's the disconnect that people are having right now, right? We can try to educate all we want. People are looking at us saying, don't tell me pumping doesn't help. You're pumping. I'm going to go pump my own backyard too, right? I mean, that is, so I'm going to take matters into my own hands. And, and that's what we're, I think, bumping up against. And, and it seems like this would invite more of that if, you know.
But could we, could we do an ordinance that says, if you pump, you cannot go across a public right of way or you can't, you know, whatever restrictions that address the Muscatine issue, for example.
But just that restriction.
Well, we could probably think through other, other mechanisms like that.
Because the issue that we had in the past.
Right.
Right.
That's what a lot of our calls were, where somebody was pumping on.
Somebody's pumping on my backyard. Yeah.
And so there's that. You can't pump to somebody else's yard without permission, the homeowner's permission. But also, you know, to the extent we had hoses going down busy roads and they were causing problems, we could say, you can't do that. We could, we could set boundaries.
I mean, there is a difference between the government pumping and private pumping because ours is done on a plan that, that's been outlined.
Significantly larger pump.
Yep. It's a larger pump, but it's also a plan knowing where to pump and how the drainage system works.
And, and. And the private people are just, they don't have any.
Education is that while we're only pumping at these two locations, it, it lowers it for the whole island. It, it is, it, it's still serving you. But if you're with these low lying areas, it will take longer for it to, to take effect. And, and to your point, we've got enough historical folks that have worked here in knowledge and we've got all our different apps that show our different pumping locations. We know those hotspots to stand on, be the most effective. And we know where to put it. It's not going to cause a problem.
Some people don't want to speak the education that.
Well, I, I do think it supports, you know, to Stephen's point about not having him have to make a call on whether it's okay to pump from here to there, you know, does help at some level regardless, because it's not someone pointing a finger back at the village saying, well, so that guy made the point. And then that guy couldn't. And so then it becomes more of a safety issue. Do we have, and it's easier to address from a, I mean, I'm not saying it's easier to address, but is, is it a different type of addressing the issue?
Yeah. The whole question of do you make a rule that you can enforce? That, that argument is, is, you know, I don't know.
Wonder too, if we're, if we're not trading problems, right? If we say you can't pump, then I think your, your call volume goes up tenfold and say, well, then bring the city pump over here. If only, if only the village can do it, then put it on, put it at the end of my server. You know? I mean, the reality is people just get impatient, right? When you're sitting there and your house is in water, I, I get it, right?
I get it too. I get it.
It's a personal situation that everybody wants resolved as quickly as possible.
Right.
It's, it's definitely understandable. Got to have a, a, a clear idea of what we're having to cause a problem.
So we had some donated pumps and then we bought pumps and regulatory, necessary equipment. Are we going to also talk about buying more pumps? Or are we just going to say this is what we're going to do?
I, I thought that our, maybe I'm misremembering, but I, I think that we had, we looked at those as, oh, maybe they should be bigger. Maybe there should be more. And then we got the AIA grant and we're like, you know, before we make a decision, let's get the people who actually are studying this to make recommendations. And so I think in terms of going forward, before we spend money on it, we should get, you know, we have these people doing this work. Let's get the answer.
Sounds logical. Well, and, and we heard information from Jim too about the impacts of all of that. So if we were going to think about pumps, we want to be really thinking about strategically, what would we use them for?
Right.
And where would they be placed? It's just, it's not just a matter of getting more pumps up. People just want to give us pumps as if, you know.
Yeah, I want somebody.
Well, remember, I mean, we, we have this after the PTC eight, right? Like, once you breach the, the banks of the lagoons, more pumps wouldn't have helped, right? Like it, it doesn't move at any faster. I mean, you, you hit a, a capacity constraint.
And I think people don't understand that. So I, I don't know. Education is hard, but it's almost sounds before. I mean, I can just see having similar presentations, what we heard today, perhaps in a different way in some body, whether it's with the conservancy or if that's outside their area or the, our BHA or somebody sponsoring some kind of educational piece. And it won't, it won't cure up the problems.
It sounds like we've got some modeling that's available to us now that it wasn't some of our previous stormwater plans that we can say, he could run some, he talks in these areas. And more bang for your buck than this area. So then it's a matter of figuring out how to tie it into our system. Because we've got some areas that we have found behind those ridges to tie into our system to get it over that ridge quicker. So we're not waiting for it to flow horizontally through that dune ridge. So it's things like that. And we, we have, you know, I think we're on phase four of our stormwater plan with hit some of these little pockets. And that's what we've done. We found pump stations and hard pipe that to kind of get it on the other side of that ridge quicker.
But I think that's something people don't really quite understand or they've forgotten. So they get.
Well, but, but some people are new.
Yeah.
That's right. Some people are brand new and I think.
Once you live through one, you really understand it a whole lot better.
And I mean, development on the other side is, is done required now to cover an acre essentially. That's, everybody can say, well, I hate how they clear cut everything, but that's what's going to be required so that you can have a stormwater system. The movie says, but we obviously don't want that on Ballhead. Nobody wants to see that. So these, that's the give and take.
Yep. Yep.
But you, Steve, you talk about painting the freeboard line.
Or just, just put some sort of visual reference.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go across there.
Fact sheet about what happens on this island when you, when you have a home in, in the flood zone, blah, blah, or here are the things you can do. Like you say, get everything you don't want wet up above that line. Which, you know. Which, you know, we've, our home flooded worse in Floyd than it ever did in Florence or Tropical Storm Eight. Well, I got, I know where that, that line is, the twelve inches. So I built ramps for my golf carts. So they're elevated.
The only problem I see with that is still the turnover. So that homeowner knows what that line means.
Right.
What is the next two or three that get just painted over? Because I don't know this stupid line. It's just one of the things that pop in my head as a possible way of having some sort of educational.
So I do want to mention that with Withers Grant, there, there's another project that we're working through right now, which is the last, it's a newer one. And it's a stormwater infrastructure grant, planning grant. So a lot of those issues and things that we're talking about now, they'll help us develop a comprehensive plan and maybe even recommendations as well too. So some of the stuff that's coming about will be part of that project as well.
Well, people need to know we're doing that too. I mean,
We push, push out some of that information about receiving that grant.
Right. They don't know what that means.
And that's little, the, I, I think the whole idea of painting the freeboards or the flood zone in your garage. And I painted blue. Oh, but I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea. It might not last forever, but it's a good idea if it's.
Okay. So before, this is, so by our March meeting, we want to have a discussion about whether this should be an ordinance or you know, between now and then, just think about it and, and see what we, hopefully nothing floods before then, but.
And, and you could be thinking, well, look, some of those guardrails, potential guardrails.
Yes. We, we looked at like Caswell and Ocean Isle and some others that have some veins that we could draw from. So there are some, there are some models for
Okay.
You could do, again, all of those have places, they have more places to, to pump than we can, but they do limit them pretty, pretty severely.
Okay.
Yeah, like for instance, most of the ones I contacted have not allowed anybody to pump to the beach.
Well, you can't pump to the beach here. I don't know where they're going to pump. That's an issue.
Right. Okay. Stephen, thanks so much.